Good evening. I would like to call the Monday, November 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting to order. If you would all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we will have Board Member Jesse Knight read the mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continued education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Jesse. And we have Board Members Williams and Schmidt will not be joining us tonight. And we will start out tonight. Item A, it's a board celebration, Excellence in Energy Efficient Design Award. And we will have Zach Kelly. Is Zach, Zach is not here? Okay. Jeremy Sorensen from Mid-American Energy, who I know well. Hi, Jeremy. And he will come up and kind of give us a little overview of this. And we thank you so much for the partnership the Mid-American plays with the district. So make sure the green button is on and you should be good to go.
Is it on? All right. It's still on. That's good. Good evening and thank you for having me here this evening. My name's Jeremy Sorensen. I'm a Business Connections Manager with Mid-American Energy here in Waterloo. I'm here this evening to present an award recognizing energy efficiency efforts by Waterloo Schools for the construction of Lowell Elementary School. I have the 2022 Excellence in Energy Efficiency Design Award for you this evening. Waterloo Schools partnered in the commercial new construction program offered by Mid-American Energy. This is also a program that Lion Energy offers. Our consultant, Wildon, partnered with the school, the architects and engineering consultants on this project. Lowell School achieved a 49% annual energy savings compared to the CNC program baseline. The total incentive for this project was right around $111,000. The check was delivered to the school board, I believe, a few months ago. The anticipated annual energy savings compared to the code minimum for that building will be around $60,000 a year, actually $58,000 a year. The award was announced publicly at the 2022 American Institute of Architects Iowa Convention back in September. The award for Lowell was one of, one of four that was selected out of 131, 131 commercial new construction projects for 2022. So you were in the top four out of 131 that were part of that programming for last year. So we just want to thank you for being a partner in that. And here's your award.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, and were there any specifics that were done in Lowell that, that made up such a big difference in the energy consumption?
There's a pretty thick report on it. So again, there was, you had options throughout construction during that. You had some different options that you could take for different items. Obviously, I don't have that list in front of me, but you chose to take those items as part of that. The rebate that came back to you on that was around 130 some thousand dollars. And ultimately, in the end, you know, this is going to reduce your energy consumption and will save you around $58,000 a year in energy costs as you move forward with that school. So these programs are great and it's great that you're forward thinking from day one and working with our consultants and your consultants to have a project that will ultimately save energy and save energy costs as you move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And the classrooms have that, where they each have their own like air exchange unit? Is that part of what saves some of it or is that just a cool feature?
I was not part of the design team on it, so I'm here to give the award, but I can get you, I can get you specifics on it. We, we actually hire consultants to do the work for us. So we're the program administrators and we help with the payments on the end, but we've got some cold consultants on it and I'd be glad to share that information with you. It's a pretty, pretty thick report. There's a lot that goes into it, so.
Okay. And we'll have Dr. Smith accept the award for the district.
All right.
And we'll get a picture if you wouldn't mind.
That'd be great.
Super. I think we had a picture with the check earlier, so now we have a. Thank you very much, Jeremy. Yeah, we're, it's awesome just, you know, with the design of the building and then all of the money saving. It's super. So now we will move on to item B, which is on page two, and that's another board celebration this evening, and that's Dick's Sporting Goods donation to East High School. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $7,000 grant from the Dick's Sporting Goods as presented.
Some mood.
Second.
And we have Tim Moses here to tell us, and is Mr. Mohammed here? Yep, awesome. And they'll come up and it's awesome to have partners that help us in all these avenues with our, from athletics to energy to, we'll have more tonight, hopefully. Go ahead. Nice to see you all three tonight.
Good evening. My name is Tim Moses. I'm the athletic director at East High School. I have here with me our head girls track coach Cory Mahoney and our head boys track coach, Aaron Taylor. And I'd love to give Cory to tell you the great news because it was really his project and his idea to get this sponsorship.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us and thank you for the opportunity to receive this grant. As always, we're fundraising, trying to raise money for our local schools, regardless of the high school or the junior high. I was fortunate, myself just going out in the community trying to figure out ways we can lessen the burden for our parents and our families. And I came across the Dick's Sporting Goods Community Grant. And we were initially buying a team basketball.
Is your green light on?
Oh.
Such a loud speaker.
I know. I didn't even.
Oh, I'm official now. I feel like I could see you right now, but I'm not. So I need to start over because I forgot. No, I'm joking.
You don't have to start over.
So as always, we're trying to raise money for our schools, east and west, our middle schools and whatnot, just to lighten the burden for our families and our parents because we understand there are social, socioeconomic challenges that we face with each and every day. Just out in the community, I came across the Dick's Sporting Goods Grant. So I emailed their store director. She sent me to the marketing director all the way up in Minnesota, got the ball rolling and with that. And we were fortunate, girls' basketball received a contribution as well, but it was smaller. But the track program, we were in need of a lot of different things, just to advance the training. This is my first year coaching track at East High, but I am a director of a summer track club and who, Coach Aaron also coaches with Impact Track and Field. And we knew there was things that we were able to do on the summer circuit that advanced our program to be one of the top sprint programs in the country to where we needed to bring some of that to East High School. And I immediately contacted Aaron. I'm like, bro, we might be getting $7,000. Like, what can we do? And, you know, there's a lot of training equipment and that goes above and beyond just the normal budget of our school. So with Dick's jumping on board and being a part of this, it's making a huge impact. Our team is already excited about it and we're just getting started. So I just want to thank you guys for that and we're looking for the opportunity to continue to build the track program at East. Light's still on.
Good job. Good job. So like, what are some of the things you're going to use the dollars for?
Correct.
Well, I was going to buy me a wig. No, I'm joking. So I've been using that joke all day. No, definitely not. So there's speed resistance bands, different hurdle equipment, different weight and sled equipment that we can use to train with. It's a host of little intricate things. You want to speak on that, Aaron? Because he's the guru, but he's shy. So I immediately went to him. And so those, some of the things we'll be able to order, because one of the things we plan to do this year with East High Track and Field is we're going to combine and run it like a university. So we'll have a sprint coach for the boys and the girls, a hurdle coach for boys and girls, because we're going to have multiple coaches, several coaches are going to volunteer. And we're incorporating our entire track and field, Impact Track and Field program and what we did with that, kind of what, you know, into East High's Track and Field program. You know, we were fortunate, we've been able to take upwards of potentially, I think around 30-plus kids to the Junior Olympics. My daughter, Alana Mohammed, two-time state champion, 12-time All-Stater, Kares Roberts, record holder, they both are running collegiately, a bunch of kids, we've been able to get to the Junior Olympics just off some of the stuff we were able to do in Impact Track and Field because we could afford different things. And it just helps with the training. And so it's going to advance our programs. I would definitely invite West High to participate in that. I don't think Dick's has ever really given a huge contribution like this to our community, to our high schools and whatnot. And so we're excited about it.
Yeah. And I just want to thank you for taking the initiative to, you know, find that and do some research and then do all the paperwork and get that going because that is just awesome.
Yeah, but I sent a bunch of emails. I forget the lady's name that gave me the tax form. Man, I probably emailed her one question at a time back and back.
That's okay. You got the job done.
That's who it was.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, she responded, I said, can I just call you?
Shout out to Deb tonight. We're helping with this also.
And everyone, our athletic director, Tim Moses, our district A.D., Dan Huff, they're always supportive. I always say, we're fortunate at East High. Tim Moses, a Waterloo-born and raised East High grad, so he understands what it's like to walk the halls of Troy, as both of us are also East High grads. So we're excited about what the future holds for us.
Great. Super.
And appreciation to Dick's and, you know, helping our community out.
Major appreciation to Dick's. They have a long time customer now.
Exactly. I missed our point is supporting those local businesses support us as well. And so I think that's important that, you know, when we do go out, think about who supports Waterloo Schools and.
Definitely.
Yes. So awesome. Well, thank you so much, all in favor of accepting this award. Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zeros. So you've got it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And Tim is a pretty good guy. Yeah. Okay. The next item on our agenda tonight is information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board this evening before I, okay, there is, sure. Okay. So this is the opportunity where those who wish to address the board can do at the current time. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time is expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We're all here with the goal of trying to help our students. Please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. Finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comments, but it is generally not a back and forth discussion, especially on items, of items not on our agenda tonight. At times, we'll try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we need to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. With that, I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward, start by stating your name and your home address, and make sure the green light is on.
So I may be getting ahead of it, but obviously I'm here for JRTC for our request to go out and state. So I'm Chief Mass Sergeant Paul Wallace, the West High Air Force JRTC instructor. So, but normally we'd like to bring some cadets with us, but between sports and everything else, I'm here by myself tonight. But I know we presented our package. This is a new competition for us. Normally, we've been gone to Ozark for the last three years, but this year we're going to try Lee's Summit, which actually allows us to do two things. One is it allows us to do what we call curriculum in action. We like to tell the cadets to tell their trips, their friends are going on a CIA trip because, you know, it sounds cooler that way. But anyway.
Can we, we actually have a motion for the board to approve this in our items, but we can go ahead and continue to do it now, but I need to get the motion on the table and then.
Yeah, fine. I just wanted to see if there's any questions.
Yeah, sure. Is that all right or do we need to?
Let's address it.
Yeah. Well, we will come back to you when we, we'll pull it from the agenda and we'll have you come back up when it's under our consent agenda and we'll pull, pull that item specifically so you can come and give us all your information, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for that confusion. Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. So the next item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which tonight consists of six items. And the first item being item C, which is the minutes of October 24th, 2022 regular board meeting. Item D, the regular personnel appointments and adjustments. Item E, the bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item F, the West High School JROTC travel to Missouri. Item G, appointment of board member to the Black Hawk County Conference Board. And item H, the setting the date of a public hearing for the Sloan Wallace Stadium Park. Are there any of these items that board members would like to have removed?
Item F.
Dees and David.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So could I have a motion to approve item C, E, G, and H?
Some mood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. The first item then ayes, item G, which is the personnel appointments and adjustments. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
Some mood.
Second.
And discussion, please.
Yes, I just had a quick question about the new position. What is a confidential secretary and what's that role?
It is a secretarial role, however, it deals with highly confidential and sensitive data. So typically you see those in HR departments in school districts or finance departments, but also in a few other areas where they may handle a significant amount of confidential data. So I think the, the difference is those job duties plus in our structure, that position is, I don't know what the difference in pay is. It might be $2,000, $3,000 per year.
So we've never had this position. Oh, I'm sorry.
To be clear, it's, it's not, we replaced an individual, not position.
Yes.
We just changed the description. We just changed the job description.
Okay. I was wondering the same thing because I hadn't seen that come before finance, the new position, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So TAP, like, I know what TAP is, but we maintain a secretary of our own with TAP?
Can you, I'm sorry. Oh, TAP.
Or is that, does that recommend, does that mean something different?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, but I do believe that that is more of a budgetary, that that's what that comes out of the TAP budget.
Got you. Thank you.
Not a department.
Not, correct.
Stephanie said that has always been under TAP.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's always been just for budgetary. It's under the same. Okay. Okay. But they'll be housed here? Here. Yeah. Good. Thank you.
And I guess when we are discussing this, I see we have quite a few special needs pairs hired. How are we coming as far as positions being filled and, you know, in that category?
Yeah, I know, I know a couple of weeks ago, I think our last board meeting, we had about somewhere in the 40s of a number we needed to fill, so, which was down from, I think, 70-something this summer. So it looks like we've, we're doing somewhat of a decent job slowly filling those, though. Myself and Aqui, our communications director, have been working on a, I guess you could say, recruiting campaign for hourly positions that we want to launch in December and January. So, and then teaching wise, we've got 22 that are posted. Three of those are in the process of being filled, which is down from around 30 at the beginning of the school year.
So how's the campaign going for recruiting, like with people you know? I saw that, that was kind of sent out, so.
Oh, you mean the referral bonus?
Yes, thank you.
I just looked at a list of how many requests we've got earlier today, and so far we've gotten three people who have submitted requests for the referral bonus based on referrals that they have made.
One other thing to note is Anthony and I spent probably 30 to 45 minutes with our principals last week with our head principals, kind of just not only kind of confirming our approach to hiring for second semester, but also really empowering them to be the lead recruiters in their buildings. Sometimes there's, and this goes with all districts, is it HR's job to recruit new employees or is the building principals or building leadership? And really, we want to empower our buildings as much as possible to do some of that word of mouth recruitment, to really communicate amongst buildings about student teachers. We've got a really good, I actually sat with Lorene in HR and then Megan in special ed just to make sure that we're being as aggressive as possible and going after people for second. My focus was on second semester. I felt really good and I communicated that with our district leadership team. Felt really good about the processes we have in place in both those areas, both with, with Megan and with Rain. But again, we spent time with our principals telling, you know, encouraging them, when we give them names of employees who are interested, we got to follow up immediately. Every day matters in hiring. We know all other districts are wanting kind of the same employees, especially when it comes to some of these high need positions. So I do feel, you're asking great questions, both of you guys, we're really have spent some considerable time recommunicating our expectations with building principals about what we expect from them for recruitment and to moving fast on, on hiring.
So what that said with the going out or recruiting, are they actually physically going out, especially as we move from the spring, as we hire from the new graduates? Are they actually going out to get and talk to these people?
So they would be talking to them, mostly the student teachers that come through their building and identifying them that way in terms of, you know, they're able to actually see them teach for a certain amount of time and, and would be able to tell if, from that perspective, they meet the standards of who they would require from a teacher, or what they would require from a teacher in their building. But, you know, we also do go out to all the recruiting fairs that are available around the state, which typically is three. Well, I should say, I've done that in the past. I don't know what our history has.
Yeah, I was going to go with that.
Yeah. Yeah. So you and I, Iowa and Iowa State are typically the ones that I go, go to. I don't know that there are any others put on in the state. We've also kind of been talking a little bit about, you know, are we big enough? Do we have enough openings to hold our own teacher job fair just for Waterloo Schools?
Will you be recruiting out of state and going to other areas outside of Iowa?
Not yet, I would say. The state recently changed some of the, what we would call license reciprocity rules, for the good, though.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just not sure yet exactly all the details, plus showing up out of state and trying to bring people back here is, I'm not sure you get the ROI on that without some really careful targeted planning in terms of where you're going to go and, and what you're looking for.
Do we work at all with the upper Iowa satellite? I know they have an early ed teaching program, right?
Yeah, we do get, I'm trying to, I don't know what, if it's early ed or if it's special ed that we're getting several teachers from. I know they, I mean, we have agreements with them in place to do student teaching here and all that, so. But I, I don't know how many come from there.
And I, I actually ran into a student teacher that's going to be hired and was just so excited about the transition and being able to do that and knowing the building and the kids. So I think that's an excellent idea. And then I was also wondering, you know, we just had the tour to the historically black colleges, if there would potentially be any type of recruitment we could do there, too, you know? I mean.
We, I believe, last year Kingsley invited up students from Lincoln University in Missouri. And I've, I've talked to them, though, the, the person I talked to was running for political office and so I have not heard from her yet whether she won or lost. If she won, she will no longer be there. So I do know that they, they had a few students from there last year that they thought they were going to be able to get hired and it, it did not end up happening, so. But I've had one conversation with her a couple of weeks ago about, you know, what went well with that trip, what could be improved? Is it worthwhile for you guys to come up here again? Do we, do you want us to come down there and do something, so?
With Iowa law changing, it might be different this year, right? I don't know enough about it.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you, Anthony. Any more questions? All in favor then of improving the personnel items?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Next up is item F, and that will be the West High School JROTC travel to Missouri. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High's JROTC team to travel to Lee's Summit, Missouri, December 2nd and 3rd, 2022.
Some mood.
Second.
And discussion, if you'd like to come up now, that would be great. And you can give us a little update on the entire trip. I know we have information in our board packet of your itinerary, so.
Right. Does anybody have any questions off the top of their head? Okay. Yeah, like I said, one of the things we like is it's a little shorter trip because going down to Ozark, Missouri is quite the drive. And so it's a lot of, yeah, it wears you out, right? And then, but the nice thing about Kansas City is there's a lot to do there, right? So you get the kids, you know, they get to explore somewhere else. And like I said, there's the World War I museum there. And there's also the train station right now. It's also historic and obviously a lot of troops left from there and there's a ton of history there, too. So we're kind of actually trying, they're both right next to each other, so we get to combine a little bit of, you know, like I said, the curriculum action along with it, other historic place, you know, of the train station there. And then Lee's Summit is just down the road a little bit. So like I said, it's, it's, it's a way to really sort of introduce the kids to a lot of things and also get a first drill competition underway, right? So.
Pam said good barbecue, so you better hit that out.
Yes, well, that's true, too, yeah.
But, and we would like it if you would come back and tell us how you did, you know, and maybe, like you say, if some cadets can come, that's awesome because we like to hear from the kids, but.
Yeah, hopefully we can work our schedules out with.
Yeah, that would be great.
This is the first night for wrestling and basketball and a lot of stuff.
Winter sports starting tonight, so.
Yeah, there was, yeah, a lot of things pulling at it there, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would like that. And like I said, we're a small team. We're a younger team, but, you know, we're not able to compete in a lot of different things. But right now, over the last week or so, things are starting to come together, so we're hoping to go there and do some good stuff there, so.
Yeah. Small but mighty.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
I just had a quick question. Like you said, you usually go further south. Any particular reason why you haven't done Lee's Summit?
We actually used to do Lee's Summit as I was looking back through some things and because a few years ago, they stopped doing their drill competition and Ozark was available. Ozark is actually still the same, same Saturday. So, but you got to go by Lee's Summit on the way to Ozark. So you're still on the bus for another three hours after you pass Lee's Summit. So this way we'll be there and, like I said, we'll get to actually also, the curriculum action, adding the, what we call the curriculum action, I think is another plus because like I said, these, the cadets that come in every morning at 6:30 and drill, you know, this is a way to sort of reward some of that extra effort that other cadets, you know, who are only just doing JRTC itself. And so it's doing that and giving them a little something to where they get to kind of come back and talk about the trip, I think, is, is an extra plus for them, too, so.
Perfect. Well, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. And board, all in favor? I see Stacy has stepped out, but all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries four zero. So we appreciate you coming and good luck and, and be safe.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda tonight is item I, and that's on page 44, and that is the purchase of Ignite program for East and West High Schools. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the Ignite program at a total cost of three hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars as outlined, exposing students to multiple career pathways, creating more elective opportunities in the trades, and creating an articulation to the Waterloo Career Center.
So moved.
Second.
And we have Mr. Frost here tonight. And I have to say, we talked about the dress code earlier and you look very, very nice tonight, Mr. Frost.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My wife dresses me, so I don't know. I, I can't take any credit for what I wear. Um, I'm here tonight for a second time, actually. I think I got polled last time.
You did.
You had some, you guys had some questions that I, uh, answered. And I think we have all of the key questions that were asked, answered at this point. But the proposal is, is to put the Ignite program, which we are already offering, um, to our high school kids at TechWorks in downtown Waterloo. Um, we want to place it in both East and West High Schools. Um, as initially, it's gonna be open for all students because we have to kind of create cohorts coming through. But eventually, we would like it to be a ninth and 10th grade program. That would be a feeder into the WCC. But it's also a great connection on the backside of this and the fact that we have Project Leadway Automation Robotics, uh, that they take in middle school. So it's, it's just a natural, uh, progression of basically, uh, a continuing strength, uh, from eighth grade through the high school years up to the WCC there. So seeking approval on this, um, it's a, a great program. Um, like I said, right now, we offer it at the, the TechWorks program and just are very limited on seating because of only sixteen seats available for the entire district at that place. Um, with this, we'd actually have potentially up to two hundred seats, um, available over two semesters. It depends really kind of how much scheduling, students get scheduled in right away or not. Um, but eventually up to, depending on the schedules, up to two hundred students to two forty, um, over the two semesters that it would be offered during the school year there. So any questions that you have? I know there's, I, there's a ton of information in that packet. I'm not sure, um, other than Lyle, who all really dug through it in a deep dive and asked great questions. But hopefully, um, as you did the deep dive on the questions and the answers that I gave, uh, to, to Lyle there, that you, um, have a better understanding of what we're looking for.
My only question, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, is what is the consumable price every year?
So there are no, the consum-, the only consumable price would be the products that would, uh, go into the 3D printers.
Okay.
And then the, uh, product that would be used on the CNC machinery. Those would all be purchasable, um, by, through our Perkins grant. So as a consumable, they are an expense per se, but it can also be purchased as part of Perkins.
How much does it change the space at East and West, um, as far as location? Cause I, in my mind, I kind of see where's that the TechWork building and they have it kind of set up. So what does it kind of look like in, at the schools?
It, it's actually gonna look a lot better. If you kind of, I know some of you went to the, um, TechWorks last year for a tour of that. Literally that space is probably the size of everything from this gating up front to the back of the wall. Um, the, the entire program is housed there in a space about the size that you're in right there. Um, we're actually gonna house this at the East High shop across the street. Um, we actually did a walkthrough. It was actually, um, Joe and Andy, the two principals at the school, Matt O'Brien, Zach Kelly, um, Tom Boer from Moss Industries, who is in charge, or who we would purchase the, uh, Ignite program from. And also, uh, representatives from Hawkeye that run the TechWorks program. So we did a, a walkthrough of both East and West and went through multiple places and spots. And when it was all said and done, we, we settled on the shop area at East and the shop area at West. Um, we're working with Zach right now just on a, a plan to get him cleaned up and get some of the, it's kind of become storage areas for some, for, uh, items.
Is the West shop areas like down where like Auto was? Is that what you're talking about by shop?
Correct, so we would actually be using, um, so the, the, it's on the west end of the building. Auto was further to the north.
Okay.
The wood shop is further to the south end of West. We would actually be using the south end of the shop, the wood shop area.
Okay.
It would just had, it was, it had better lighting. It would, it would take less work to get it, um, ready. So we, we kind of settled on that. Um, at East High School actually, because of, um, with Dick's program, with the robotics, Dick Urban's program with robotics. They actually have a, a great classroom in that facility and it really flows right into an open shop area that's really ready to roll. Um, we would just have to purchase our, and this again would be out of Perkins. We'd have to purchase some, some sturdy, uh, high level tables that the equipment would rest on. Um, but really, there's not a lot of prep. Um, Zach said it would take some cleanup, uh, some paint, some maybe extra lighting in certain spots just to brighten it up. Uh, to, to really make it to, uh, ready because these shops haven't been used per se. Other than for things like robotics and stuff in about the last six years. Um, I think Kerry Trimble retired in 2018 from West, and that's the last time that shop was used with automotives. And I think, um, Mr. Ballvin's left East, maybe in like 2017 or 18. And that's probably the last time that those, that shop had been used at East High School. So it's not, the, the shops are in great, I mean, they're in great standing. They just need to be cleaned up and really they've become kind of storage areas. We just need to get some stuff moved out, um, out of there. And also the other part of this, so Zach and I are gonna sit down. A lot of the equipment in both the East and the West shop are things that were purchased with Perkins money. And really, there's no need for them, uh, anymore. So we're going to, um, actually, uh, go through there and inventory that stuff. And then I think if you remember, maybe two or three years ago, actually is probably pre-COVID, we did an auction of Perkins purchased items, um, that were stored out at, I don't wanna, um, what's the name of that building? I always forget it. Where we store our stuff at, we did a, 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 uh, auction of that stuff. We're gonna do that again. We're gonna take the, the items in both the East and West High Shops purchased by Perkins and we're just going to do an auction to sell them to the public.
Um, one last question. It's just, um, I know that when I did look at that program, one of the comments was not enough females in the program. So, um, how are we gonna go about getting more females into that program? Especially now that we have a larger space. And I know that's just work with our counselors, but.
Well, it is work with your counselors, but the counselors can only do so much. I mean, they can schedule them in, but without the, the background and without them, the exposure and the engagement, I think that's really on us as, as a district, as in my group, to really do a better job of recruiting, exposing and engaging, um, whichever groups into whatever programs, you know? We need more male nurses. We need more females in the trades. And, um, each year, we have to do our, our Perkins goals to, to get the actual grant. And, um, my number one goal the last two years has been, uh, underrepresented populations and, uh, into programs that they're not in now. And definitely females in the skills trades, the engineering, the pre-engineering, uh, is a big part of what we need to do. And honestly, it needs to really start with, um, the, the middle school students to kind of excite them at that level. I actually had a, a meeting today of Cardinal Construction, which is, uh, led by Katie, uh, Su Song. Well, um, I was gonna say Katie Brocher, but Katie Su Song. And we had a great meeting and I said, Katie, here's the thing. I need people like you to come out and recruit females into the trades. And to, to show that, you know, it doesn't matter what your, your sex, your race, your this, your that is. These are great paying jobs, great paying opportunities. The reason I think Ignite is important because there are a lot of female students that in eighth grade and, uh, taking Project Leadway Automation Robotics that are excited by it. But what happens is, is they don't see that again. It's, in fact, um, the trades is the only program in both high schools that does not have a feeder program in it. Um, we have for, there's, there's six service areas in Iowa. We have not brought on Egg yet. So I'm gonna say, we really have five programs in service areas. Egg will be coming, but of the, the five service areas that we offer programming at, at the Career Center and at the middle school level, the only one where there's a disconnect, where there is no connection at the high school level is, um, the mechanical, the trades and engineering pathway or strand. And I think this will also help kind of keep that connection alive. Not only the recruiting side of it, but letting the students know, hey, you were excited about this in eighth grade. You took Project Leadway Autom-, Automation. Let's keep you going, let's go to, let's take Ignite in your building and get excited about this. And cool thing about Ignite, there are literally like nine different WCC programs, current and future, that tie directly into it. And that's why I think it's very important that we have this, you know, this articulation, this linear, uh, pathway, uh, program in place. Cause it's the only program, it's the only service area that doesn't have that in place. And, uh, I, I think it's, you know, the high school principals are very excited about this, um, on, on multiple layers and reasons. Um, and one of them is just the ability to recruit females into what are kind of non-traditional areas per se, that we don't see a lot of females. But big part of our recruitment planning, no doubt about it.
Have you, uh, considered, a few years ago, there's Cedar Valley Sweet Group, side of women engineers, were mentoring some female students at, uh, I think fifth grade, now fourth, fifth and middle. They might be another group to maybe engage, to get some, you know, some media program going again, film to help with, uh, maybe recruiting into this Ignite program.
If you could email me that, Jesse, or give me a, a spelling on that, I would love that. Because one of the things actually, so I've been working with Acquion recruiting plan for really the underrepresented populations and trying to figure out, how can we get more students into the programs that are underrepresented by different populations? And that's really been the focus. Um, we get the programs, you know, really good numbers with what you would call stereotypical students that you would expect in programs based on stereotypes. But we need to recruit underrepresented. And I know one of our pieces is, um, getting, engaging with Erin Sale, who is our STEM coordinator, and engaging students in third, fourth, fifth grades in STEM related activities, which are flowing to CTE, which would kind of flow into the middle school and, and high school programs. But yeah, I, I would like that actual program, and I'll write that down, or you can email me, or I can email you.
She could give you some connections to people that might be wanting to volunteer. I mean, my, I mean, my daughter had it mentor for that during her middle school career. And that was, you know, a big influence on her in choosing a technical career path, so.
And as far as instructors for the programs, will they be, um, you know, people in-house or, uh, will?
So what's gonna happen there is, West High School has, um, Andy, so it's kind of two separate entities here. Andy has, uh, a science math opening. So the bottom line is, the instructor for teaching Ignite has to go off and get training this summer. We're gonna identify, recruit and, um, bring that person on board. Um, again, the training process, we, we pay for them to go get trained out of Perkins. Um, actually Cedar Valley Manufacturing Association has said they would step up and pay for any recruitment and, um, the training pieces of that. So we're gonna, after this is approved, Andy and I are gonna work on just taking his FTE that's open and, um, getting, uh, the, the right person hired for that position. He really wants either a math or a science person, which kind of ties in nicely with, with the Ignite position. Um, and, and the part of that too, that's really nice is, he says, let's say we start out with Ignite. It could be for seven out of eight periods per se. But let's say the first semester, just because kids aren't aware of it, that we only fill it for five periods. He goes, that gives me two periods where I can repurpose that FTE in science or math. So we do have a plan there. On the east side of things, they're very, very tight on FTE. And the, the thing that Joe and I have talked about is potentially as C3 has become more and more prevalent being taken at middle school, um, potentially, if, if that opens up some FTE within his building, we could pull from that. Um, another thing is, is we're doing just a general re-evaluation of, um, all FTE within CTE and the Career Center. So there may be some options of, of moving some FTE around to, to create. It, it's not to pull in or having more FTE, so to keep Anthony, um, not worrying about that. But it's just altering or moving current FTE that we have into appropriate places. Identifying and then of course, um, getting the person trained and onboard there. But we do have, we do have a plan. It's just a, a matter of approval on this first and then the next steps after that.
Okay, well, let's approve it.
So are, are there any prereqs at all?
No, there's not. Yeah, the great thing about Ignite is, um, you could, the only prereq is that you're excited about being in a program that is hands-on and, um, engaging and lots of activities. It's, it's a really, the cool thing too is, like, we're, like I said earlier, we're gonna meet nine through twelve because when you start a program, you haven't really created cohorts. Eventually, we will get to a point where the eleven and the twelfth graders that want to take it will graduate out. And then it's gonna become really a ninth, 10th grade focus, um, program there. But no prereqs to it at all. It's, it's just basically if you are interested in, um, anything related to like twelve different areas that it would cover from electricity, pneumatics, fluids, hydraulics, CAD, drawing, um, you know, there's just a multitude of areas there that, um, you could, you could do. Working with your hands, I mean, just lots of different stuff.
So it's just a general elective that anyone can?
Absolutely, yep.
And I went as on the tour, I think you were there too, India. It, it's so project-based and those kids were so excited to show us, you know, what they learned and the processes behind it. And it, it was pretty awesome to see it. So if you could even get demonstrations out to, I mean, those kids were really excited about the program and, and they were learning a lot and hands-on, so. I, I highly recommend it.
Yeah, it was a very good program. I was, there's a lot of interesting thing, coding, different things they could do, programming. It's not just always, you know, you think of a lot of things being traditional and mechanical, but there's a lot more on the electrical side and coding side too.
They have circuitry, automation, pneumatics.
Hydraulics.
Hydraulics, um, CNC machining, CAD programming, robotics, ACDC, electrical, precision measurement, machine safety, and.
Lots and lots and lots and lots, so. All right, all in favor then of approving the Ignite programs as listed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming back. We got our questions answered. Next item on our agenda tonight is Exhibit J. And that's the SR, SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for Increasing Enrollment, Open Enrollment Out Students Not Counted in FY 2021, and Continued Funding for Limited English Proficient Instruction. And let's see. Two, yeah, we have to have two, two motions on this as no- noted on page sixty-two. So the first motion will get on the table is the open enrollment out not on prior year's head count. The district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for a modified supplemental amount of one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for open enrolled out students who are not included in the district's previous year certified enrollment count.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. The second part is limited English proficient LEP instruction beyond five years. The district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for a modified supplement amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand and forty-nine dollars related to the English Language Learning Program for students who have exceeded five years of waiting that are included on the Fall 2022 Certified Enrollment Head Count.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
Is there any limit though for how long a child can have that waiting? It's just, there just has to be an approval after five years, is that all it is?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I believe by law, it's five years. And then beyond that, we would have to have approval.
Got you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Exhibit K, which is the River Hills SBRC application. And, um, this is, I gotta get to the right page, sorry. The superintendent's recommendation is, I need my paper copy now, I'm in trouble. Sorry. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee SBRC in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium Program for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion? And we do have Sandy here to answer any questions if the board has any questions whatsoever.
I just wanna make sure, we split this cost, correct? Yeah.
Sandy, do you wanna come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
There it is.
I found it, I'm sorry, she's right.
Okay. Is this typical then, like throughout, um, the state that for programs like this, that, that administrative costs are something that the districts do pay for?
And they're shared, yeah.
But that's, no, 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 right. So that, so any district that uses?
That has students in that program.
Okay.
It's based on their student counts, yeah.
So if they all don't approve to do it, does it not work then?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't think, the, the green light is on.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I don't, I don't know that that's ever happened. Because these tend to be very, very specialized programs that districts can't typically offer themselves.
Yeah, and, and I would think that. Yeah, and, and I would think that if you, you know, we're sending students, you know that you have to do this, so.
Right, right.
No, I just wondered why it, it was something that is not allowed unless under, unless it's, um, what did it say, a special circum, whatever. Anyway, it was just, how is it worded? According to guidelines, administrative costs for special education are not an allowable cost into special education unless these are unusual circumstances.
Right, and I think Michael could probably explain this better than I can, but typically your administrative costs for, for special education are just your administrative costs for everybody. But this would be a case of a special school where they have to get an administrator just for that school.
Got you.
Basically a building principal, too.
Yeah.
And I believe this is a yearly.
Yearly thing that we approve, and it's just based on number of students, based on the amount that we pay.
It is, it is, and so it's based upon however many students happen to be going in there that year.
Perfect.
So Michael wasn't able to come tonight, obviously, I don't know if he had a chance. I did ask him if he could give you guys a quick, even a much concise summary of how that works, and so I'm looking at that right now, yep.
I know this may be unrelated, but I feel like we had also had a conversation about busing, and we also pay a portion of amount of busing for certain students for special. You're shaking your head.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. I don't know. Okay. I have another question, but I don't know if it's related as far as like how far, as far as like a member's school that we pay out, or pay a portion for busing, if this makes sense, like.
So like, how far away students are that are transported to River Hills, is that on our cost?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
It would just be students that are within our boundaries.
Got it, okay.
Otherwise, the other districts would, would pay for their boundaries as well.
Okay.
Or students within their boundaries.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We're paying for our 20 kids.
Right.
Okay.
Wherever they reside, though, yeah.
And if they choose busing.
Yeah, at one time, there was a child move like in Davenport that we were still paying for because they were our student, but they were in Davenport.
Right, that's what I was.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you, all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Sandy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item then is on the same, um, same docket, I guess, it's the Lead, Lead, Lead Center Consortium SBRC Application for Special Education Administration Costs. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the board approve the application to the school budget review committee SBRC in the amount of $13,614.09 for special education administrative costs associated with the Lead Center Consortium Program for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, please.
So this has residential and day programs, so do we, do we do transportation from Waterloo to Waverly?
We do.
Okay.
And I believe right now, the students that we have that are going to the Lead Center are just day students.
Okay.
I don't know that we have any, but I can't think of anybody that's there residentially right now. And it's a little bit different there because kids might not be there for the whole 180 days. They might be there for four weeks or whatever.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Sandy, for your wisdom. Um, the next item up is Exhibit M, and this is for information only, and it is, um, the review proposed policies by the district leadership team and the policy review committee, and they are being presented tonight for the first reading. And this again is information only. And I have Pam Arndorfer, the board secretary, who will, um, update us on all these policies.
Okay, thank you. So let's just kind of address the first three, and then we can go into the dress, the student dress code a little bit. Policies 217.2, 218.1, and 222.0 were all just brought back on the normal five-year rotation of policies, so most of them are just in effort to, um, no changes. And then one was just in an effort to address any major change that would be coming forward to the board, um, at a first reading would be sent back to, or would go back to policy review just to, um, to go through that process once again. So, any questions on those three?
I can handle it.
Okay. Um, and then Jared and I are just going to kind of talk a little bit about the student dress code policy. Do you want me to start, or do you want to kick it off?
I can, I can kick it off.
Kick it off? You got it.
So, the board's heard this, uh, I, I always like to give context, kind of give a little bit of background. You guys have heard this a few times from me, but public or whoever's watching might want this context. So when I took the job back in, geez, February, I think I accepted the offer, might have been January, um, right away, that was like the hot topic that was brought to me was student dress code. Uh, I mentioned to you guys, I got numerous messages, emails, texts, Facebook messages, carrier pigeons. Smoke signals. Uh, but no, a lot of people were, um, bringing this to my attention, hey, maybe it's time to make a change. During my one-to-one conversations with all of you to start, that was a topic that was brought up, was hey, is this a chance for us to take a look? Um, and basically what the discussion focused around was, we want to take a deeper look, but what does that timeline look like? So we talked about maybe changing, making a change before the start of the year, we talked about maybe making a change mid, mid-year, or maybe making a change after a year, um, or looking at making a change. Uh, I had a chance to, during a number of conversations, like I, it was just a little too quick to make any sort of recommendation on change before the school year started. Just, there's a lot more that goes into it as we're realizing, as we go through this. It's not just as easy as pull, pull the rug out and let's see how it goes, so. Um, so we actually, I feel really good about the kind of timeline, and I was trying to, as we're talking here, look back when that very first board meeting was, when we discussed, I believe it was August. So in August, I laid out a timeline for you, which consisted of bringing together a committee, having committee meetings, gathering feedback from the community first and foremost, and then with that, with the data from the community, paired with the feedback from a diverse committee, trying to come up with a potential change or potential, potential recommendation, which ultimately would result in coming to this meeting tonight on the 14th, um, with a revised, uh, proposed policy. So let me back up then. In September, late Au, late August, early September, we sent out a community survey. Um, we had 4,500 respondents, and there was a few different questions that were asked, but the, the biggest takeaway from that survey was 80%, 87% of the 4,500 respondents indicated that they wanted to see some sort of change in the dress code that would reflect a more relaxed dress code. So with that in hand, um, I went to our administrators, secondary administrators especially, but also a diverse group, and said, hey, let's pull together a committee. I need names of people who are, of parents, of administrators, of teachers, who would be interested in joining a committee that would come together and talk about this. And altogether, Pam and I probably received between 40 and 50 names. Um, also, we got student names as well. So when we had our first meeting, was it in September? I'm forgetting, October, either way, late September, late October. Late September, we had our first dress code committee meeting, about 35 people in the room. To be clear, it was not me who led the meeting, it was an outside consultant, um, from the AEA, her name is Beth Strike, did a fantastic job of leading those meetings. Over the course of the next month and a half, we had three full committee meetings and one subcommittee meeting. Um, the first two meetings really focused on looking at the data, and they kind of like, yeah, I think we're ready to propose a change. The third meeting and the subcommittee meeting really focused more on a couple really fine details, which we'll get into in a minute. Um, but at the end of the third meeting, the group came back with a, a, a pretty much what you see in front of you, um, proposed policy, which is a couple questions they had for the policy review committee. So after those three meetings and one subcommittee meeting, again with 30 to 35 people on average, a diverse group of, of individuals, um, we brought a, this, this proposed policy to policy review committee. Policy review committee met two weeks ago, and we had a lot of good dialogue around this, but there was still questions about what does this look like in terms of the enforcement? And the two biggest questions that came up were wearing hat, the biggest question that came up in the policy committee, and then also at policy review, was should students be allowed to wear hats? Some districts are doing it, most aren't, but it's definitely a thing that's out there. Along with that is should students be allowed to wear hoods? Again, not, I mean, for us, that's kind of a unique idea, but you're seeing more and more, um, districts that are looking at options like that, that would meet the needs of all students for a variety of reasons. At the policy review committee, they asked me to go back to administration and ask for feedback. So at last week's, um, principal meeting, I asked our principals to take a survey which basically focused on two questions. One, should students be allowed to wear hats and hoods? And two, the second one, which I didn't mention, was what about, um, the idea about open-toed shoes at the elementary level and the secondary level? Going into that meeting, so I, so with that, with that survey, I asked administrators, I asked all administrators, not just head principals, all DLT, head principals, assistant principals, thoughts on wearing hats and hoods. The data came back approximately 75% opposed to wearing hats and hoods, um, which is probably the more typical of, is probably, you know, the more normal route that most schools would take. The second question I asked was, do you support a policy that would have no open-toed shoes at the elementary level, and then allowing for open-toed shoes at the secondary level? And there's a little bit more, I'm saying open-toed shoes, that's a very broad statement, there's some more specifics in there. Um, again, about roughly about 75%, like 72, 73%, and the information's in front of you, um, said that that, they would support, that they felt good. I was especially interested to hear from elementary principals on that, and not only in person, but also through the survey feedback. Elementary principals in general felt, or elementary administrators in general felt that it would be appropriate not to have open-toed shoes at the elementary level because of potential risks, especially at recess. So I come to you tonight with, I would say about three months' worth of work. Um, a lot of man-hours went into this, I feel really good about the process. The, you know, I, anytime you're looking at making a change, you weigh the data versus the qualitative feedback, which is more just the word of mouth. I would say both the word of mouth and the qual, and the quantitative feedback I've received, 87%, the other have supported this change. Um, one other thought is, there's been, two, two thoughts I have. One was, I appreciate, and I've said this to them, I'll say it again, Stacy and Aster especially really wanted to make sure student voice was a piece of this, and, um, we, I forget how many student respondents, I think it was 12 to 1,400 respondents, no, I think we tried to limit it to one per person? I, I'm not exactly sure, if there might, some of the kids may have put in a few votes, but I feel pretty good. Um, but stu, there was a, overwhelmingly, you know, we're here to serve students, we say that all the time. Of course, they're going to want to be a little bit more relaxed compared to us, you know, or, I'm a little relaxed at times too, let's be honest. But Jeff Ross showing me up all the time, just joking. Um, but, you know, overwhelmingly, 90-plus percent of students are, you know, this is what they want, right? Um, and then, also, I said, I've said this a few times, at the committee meetings that we had in here, I truly feel like the students were the rock stars, like they, and they were very open-minded, and we had seven or eight students of diverse backgrounds, different buildings, and they really weighed both sides. And I've talked to some of their parents, and they said how, what a cool experience that was for them. But I really, it was really cool to hear that our staff would oft, when I, when I'd talk with them about the meetings, they'd, they'd often talk about how the student voice played such a huge role. So I want to say thanks to Stacy and Aster for.
I want to piggyback on that for a minute too, I totally agree, I think the student voice was so well-heard at the committee meetings, the students were so well-spoken and thoughtful, and, um, I, when you say that they represented both sides, they truly did, which kind of surprised me a little bit. Um, but we did hear a lot of just different perspectives from our students, so very, very proud of them, um, and that they were brave enough to, to come to these meetings and talk, so, and share their true perspectives.
The other, the, the second key takeaway I had was, I do feel like, I feel good about the process because I do feel like we had, the people who need to, like, teachers are obviously going to have to enforce this, but administrators ultimately in the buildings are going to have to make sure that, that whatever we come up with is being followed. I'll be honest, I'm in the buildings all the time, and right now, the dress code, at least at the secondary level, it, it's just kind of like, you kind of just, you know, you kind of just, you just kind of look away, because it's not, so I felt like this was a fresh, an opportunity for me to work with the principals. In each of the committee meetings we had, I mentioned this in our work session, three head principals and one lead assistant principal in the room at all times, giving their blessing on this. Beyond that, going in front of the principals two weeks ago and saying, hey, how do you feel about this? And again, I've been in front of enough groups that I felt very, very well-supported, the, the admins felt good about the process, and they felt supportive of, of this plan. Of course, everybody's got different philosophical differences on how things should work, but I do feel really good, like this process, um, delivered a good product for us. And last but not least, we mentioned this in the work session, I want, I would like to use second semester as an opportunity to gauge this as well. There are some small semantics that we've been kind of haggling over a little bit, and that's why you kind of run it second semester, get the feedback, and then go, really go into next year with a fine-tooth comb in terms of the policy. So I've talked a lot, um, you've got the policy in front of you, I feel like it's been as good a process, the people who've been involved with it felt like it was a good process as well. Um, but anyways, uh, this is just the first read, so we still got some time to go, you know, to, to give me your feedback. The, what I heard at the work session was, for the next meeting, I would come back to you guys with a clear plan of communication for staff and parents. Um, that's one thing I did not bring today, I didn't think of, but I will for the December meeting, um, because I think it's important, communication is key, that our parents and our staff know what's coming, how does this impact them, what if, i, i, if, if rules aren't followed, how, what is that chain of, of, this, I hate to use it, consequences, yes, how does that work, that sort of thing? So I talked a lot, I'm going to put my microphone on mute and listen to you guys.
So just to follow up on that as well, um, so the board did meet for a work session earlier this evening, and we had a, you know, a good discussion regarding headwear, which is what, um, the policy review committee and the dress code committee asked that that be a board decision rather than them making that decision. So, um, again, Dr. Smith had also surveyed administrators. Overwhelmingly, um, that feeling is that headwear is not allowed in the schools, so that is that option, we will stick with option one, um, that states that, um, headgear, including hats, hoods, anything worn over the head is not going to be allowed in the schools. Um, other than that, there really were no other major changes to that proposed dress code, um, that came to the board tonight. We are going to add in, um, clothing that is intended to be undergarments or sleepwear, we're going to add that verbiage to it so that students are not allowed to wear pajama pants or, or tops to school as well. Um, we are going to add at the elementary school, um, at the elementary level, that students are not allowed to wear crocs either at the elementary buildings.
Is that a good, is that a good thumbs up?
Yes. Um, so other than, um, other than that, I think, um, there's going to be a few little word changes, a few things kind of verbiage moved around a little bit, but I really feel like, um, the board has a good policy coming before us for dress code.
I did want to add that, and this is something I didn't notice when we were in there, so, um, where we talk about that the clothing is a distraction to the learning environment, so down in the, the bottom, the closing paragraph, that dressing in any manner presents a health or safety hazard or is a disruption, so I guess it makes sense to utilize that word up above as well, just because it's, it's fluent throughout then. up above as well, just because it's, it's, uh, fluent throughout then. That's just my take. I want to thank the committee, this is, this is a beautiful piece of work, I am so happy. Um, I think that this, I think that this is going to make life a lot, um, more enjoyable for everybody in our buildings, so.
Any comments, Jesse or India?
Good.
Janelle?
No, you guys, you don't deserve to make all the comments.
You did a great job. I mean, so, yeah.
And I guess I would say I see some teacher friends out in the audience, and, um, I, I see that, um, a lot of it was, um, kind of smiles or affirmations of good things, so I, that, that's what we want to do, is make it more easy for staff to also, because things are subjective, and I know that, and I was on the original, I will take ownership, Lila and I, we're both on the original board that voted for the dress code, and I do believe, and I will stand by that, that it had a time and a place, and it did, it became, um, watered, it became harder to, um, control, it became more hard for some families to buy things and sizes and, and, but I do believe that when it was implemented, it was implemented, um, with due diligence, and that it, it was effective at the time. But I would say now that we have moved on, um, I wouldn't say I agree with everything, but, um, I'm one person on this board, as Dr. Smith said, so, and, um, but I do know that, um, what we're trying to do is make it better for students and for staff. And, you know, it's hard for you staff, you have so many fires going on in the buildings at all times, and then to have to watch a kid that is out of dress code, you know, and, um, send kids home, and you hate to do that, and, and so I think this will work well, and, um, I appreciate any of you that participated in the survey and to let us know, because, um, we want to make it better for you and more workable for you guys, and, um, so if you see something glaringly wrong, please email us, one of us or all of us, or Pam or Dr. Smith, and let us know if there's something that you feel would be, um, just a, a better change, but I, I do respect the committee, and I thank them for doing that, and, um, the roles they all played on that, and, um, it just was like, um, we got input from everybody that wanted to give input, I think, so.
I know that the, um, the teachers out there, it takes a lot of decision fatigue and an emotional toll to have to make those decisions all day about what to do, about what's going on with the dress code, so I hope this helps, and I hope this preserves some of your emotional energy to, to be helping students rather than making decisions all day about what to do about this.
So, um, with that said, I think that we will have another reading, we'll be adding, um, on our December twelfth meeting, and as Dr. Smith said, um, it is hoped that it will be rolled out for the, um, second semester, is what it's hoped at this point, then we can make tweaks after things don't work, and then for the fall, really, um, so that's the plan at this point. Um, and then also with you teachers being here, we will be addressing the teacher dress code also. Um, that will be coming again in the spring, so, um, um, just to let you know that we're not leaving you out, so.
With that. One other thing, um, that was requested out of both policy review and the dress code committee is that we do post something that kind of gives, again, example like we already have, um, but of what, what students can and cannot wear, or should, should not wear, can, cannot.
Yes, and then.
And that will be, that will be coming as well.
Shall, shall not.
Shall, shall not. And also, like Dr. Smith said too, I think it's critical that you all know what the chain of command is, the levels of discipline and, and how they're handled, so that will be forthcoming also, so.
The timing of this actually is interesting because, um, the first group who has only worn uniform clothes starting in kindergarten, so they will get to have, you know, their senior year and change to not wear uniforms. So it's interesting, because it is like, like you said, Sue, it's kind of cultural as well, it wasn't just like at that time, we were saying, um, I mean, I didn't agree with that, but I, I understood what the point was, and so, um, just as a culture, what, how people dress has changed, and I, I appreciate that, um, we've all been able to take that into account, and, and, um, I think that COVID really put what's important into focus.
And I guess, lastly, you know, we do try to adhere as a board to our mission statement, which is to preparing kids for the future, and, you know, we have to give them an opportunity in, to learn here so they can be prepared there. So, um, we just thank you for, um, all your work in the school. So with that said, that will come back December twelfth, so, um, next on our agenda here is Dr. Smith's superintendent report.
Yeah, I've got three items here. First and foremost, thanks for the, those of you who came to the two-million-dollar, um, ceremony with the Waterloo Schools Foundation last week. Very, very cool event out at the, uh, Career Center, um, where the, um, the, yeah, if I said that right, Foundation celebrated passing two million dollars in donations. Um, and again, she ca- Hannah did a great job of kind of explaining how that, uh, you know, that trajectory is, is on a nice little, uh, path here, because it only took us, I think, uh, the time is becoming shorter and shorter between, uh, million-dollar marks. So I think we figured if the math is correct, we're hoping to cross three million perhaps in the next few years, so we'll see. So that was really cool though, and I got to say, like, the, um, my gosh, I was super impressed with the wor- just the, the culinary, the, the food was, I truly felt like I was at some sort of, uh, I don't know, resort or high, yeah, how high, yeah. It was just super, super impressive, so, and I gave Talia and, um, gosh, I'm forgetting her name right now, Tracy the fee, the feedback, like, amazing. Uh, second jo- the tenth grade job shadow was last week, last Wednesday and Thursday, last Wednesday, East and Expo sent their tenth graders out to different, um, businesses, and then on Thursday, West sent their tenth graders out. Um, really cool experience. I mean, I heard, we were sending pictures back and forth within a couple of group texts, I've seen this stuff on Facebook. I personally went out to John Deere, and I am not hands-on, like, I am the, I texted this group, like, um, my mechanical skills are limited, and they somehow stuck me in the manufacturing group, I'm not sure how that worked, but, uh, it was really cool. I had a chance to really talk to some of our students, and they, you know, s- three of the kids in my group, um, their parents or grandparents or both worked at John Deere, and that was like, they were super excited to be out there to tour, to get the hands-on, to be in the lab, to, to do some things, so, uh, just a cool experience, I heard nothing but good things. Uh, Amy Hunzelman, I have not had a chance to see her since Thursday, but, um, huge credit to her for pulling that off, because that's not easy to find the volunteers to place all those students. Very cool. And then last but not least, last Wednesday, we had our first eighth-grade scheduling meeting, which is like hard to believe, like, what, we're already doing eighth-grade scheduling for high school? But we had our first meeting here in the boardroom, uh, it was, I had a chance to see it, they did a really, really nice job. There's actually one going on here in seven minutes, um, over at Central, so, so there's going to be an eighth-grade scheduling meeting at Central tonight. There's actually six meetings total, one at each middle school, and then two here at the EFC, so tonight is meeting number two.
And thank you very much, and if you have an eighth grader, get to one of those meetings because they're very helpful, very, and start them out in high school with a good start, if you get to that meeting, so. We'll start tonight with our lone warrior down here, Janelle.
Holding down this side of the fort, I'm so glad so many teachers are here tonight. Um, I do understand really how hard your job is, thank you for choosing to do it, um, we're trying to help in trying to, uh, remove as many emotional burdens and, uh, time burdens as possible, so thank you for everything you do, and please keep giving the best of yourselves to our kids, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Janelle. We'll go to India next.
I just wanted to, um, piggyback on Dr. Smith's, uh, tenth grade, uh, Life Labs, um, kudos to the brainchild whoever thought about doing that, it has been a really amazing experience, um, for personally for my tenth grader who was a little bit hesitant about doing it because of the, of the more like, ugh, another thing, and she really was like, can I skip this day, but she came out like, like, this was the best experience, um, I think the person was from, a retired editor from, uh, the Courier, and just filled her, blew her mind, like she, I mean, it was an amazing experience, um, I have really enjoyed those who have come through the library, because I work at the library, and so to have those individuals to have that experience has been really cool, but just overall, just a really good experience to really get out to these local businesses until before they're out of high school, you know, just to have that experience at a young age, it's been field trips, I guess that was what I'm going to go with that, like, we had field trip when we were younger, and they're bringing them back, so, thank you very much for that.
Career trips.
Career trips. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, India. Jesse?
No, I'll say the same thing, just, and just, you know, you think about the state of art manufacturing we have in our community here that's, you know, rivals some of the, you think about automotive, but our, our things we do here locally are pretty amazing, and seeing our kids get a chance to see it, because a lot of times, they don't get a chance to go on those tours and visits, so getting firsthand view is fantastic.
Thanks, Jesse. Stacy?
Um, I kind of just have a few things from the, um, the equity committee meeting that was on the second, and Anthony, you weren't at that one, right? So I'll kind of put down the things I jotted down. Um, Evan doesn't usually give up the, our, our minutes until the next meeting, so I might have to start waiting, so he's a better note taker than I am. Um, but we did talk about, um, looking at, uh, employee data, so looking at our full-time, part-time, and then full-time new hires as far as ra- race, ethnicity, sex, and like, looking at where, um, uh, where they kind of lie as far as, um, administration, um, teaching, uh, support, so that was interesting, and it really does show that we have a lot of growth to make when it comes to, um, having our teaching population more closely match our student population. Um, so, then we were, we talked a little more about Teach Waterloo, just the things that we can keep doing to support that program, um, some of the stumbling blocks that have been in place, uh, having Dawn be a mentor, and now, uh, talking about having her be able to go into different buildings, which I think will be really, really good for the teachers that are, uh, some of them that are in, or the ones that are, I'm sorry, in the program, who are in a building maybe where they're the only one, so I think that that support will be helpful. Um, let's see, we talked about the licensure legislation stuff, so that we're hoping will help as far as, um, maybe looking at, uh, how we can recruit, and then, our, oh, the last one was like, what are some barriers that are keeping people from getting hired? And we did talk about like the cost of the initial drug test, and that maybe we can do something with, um, uh, waiving that fee, because I think it has to be done through like the, um, the, the occupational health center, is that right?
Yes, and that's not a fee we can waive, it would be something that we would have to pay for.
That we would pay, yeah, just, just so that we can knock out, um, if, if that is a barrier for somebody.
I will add, this being the fifth district I've worked for is the first one that has required pre-employment drug testing of all of its employees.
Okay. Well, if we do require it, maybe we should pay for it, so, just thought. Anyway, um, thank you all, and next time I will try to make Evan give me his notes.
Okay, well, I just, a couple of things, I know we've been here a while tonight, but just wanted to thank the RJ McRoy Trust, um, they gave us, um, it fell under our twenty-five-hundred-dollar threshold, so they didn't have to come for board approval, but they gave a nice donation to the Cunningham's Youth Emergency Fund, and that's paying for coats and hats and mittens at Cunningham, and so just, um, shout out to the RJ McRoy Trust because they continually support us and, and, um, our kids, so, and on that, just, um, parents out there, and, there's kids at bus stops without proper clothing, and if we can get kids hats and coats and mittens, um, you know, if you have them to donate to your school, um, I, call your family support worker at the school, or, I don't know, who else should they call, Pam, but we, if we can.
Call the office.
Yeah. Call here, and we can get, get them, so call Dr. Smith's office, and Pam can direct you, but, um, um, Dr. Smith, sorry, Mr. Smith?
Oh, no, no, no.
What did I say? Oh, okay, sorry. But anyway, and, um, but we really, you know, we want kids to be warm, and it's so, so cold out right now, but, um, and then with that said, um, our board here has the opportunity to go to the Iowa School Board Convention this week, and we get lots of, um, learning there, and we also have, go attend the Urban Education Network, and we meet with other large school districts, which, um, mirror some of the same issues and problems we have, so it's always a good time for the board, um, to just, um, get a little knowledge and glean some information from other people as we're in the education business, so. Um, with that said, though, our next board meeting will not be until December twelfth, and that will be the only board meeting in December, so right now, I wish everyone here a happy Thanksgiving, um, enjoy a couple days off, and, um, enjoy some good turkey, and we will see you again in December, so could I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Some mood.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried, we are adjourned.